Here. Okay, we're going to start tonight with public comment. Thank you for participating in public comment this evening. Public comment period and it's an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in order to help us comply with Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager, designee and recorder are taking notes if follow-up action is required. Is there anyone here to address the council this evening?
There is not mayor.
All right. We will move on to council items. Are there any council items this evening? See none. Patrick, are there any staff items this evening?
Only that the budget was distributed today, so you either be in your packets or are in your council office delivered to you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Council President Consent Agenda, please, would also like to note, we don't have to have a separate one for Council Hartmeyer-Pigg tonight.
Yes, as I understand, we with these minutes, we celebrate the arrival of Councilman Hartmeyer-Pigg. So how about that? I'll move the minutes, the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 5th, 2021, Agenda Bill 22117, Resolution Number 4786, Resolution of the City Council reaffirming the need to acquire property for the Allen Boulevard 92nd Avenue Path Project, 22118, Resolution Number 4787, a resolution amending the Beaverton Purchasing Code to allow extension of a contract's maximum term. 22119, authorize the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement to merge the Beaverton Community Garden Program into Twelton Hills Park and Recreation Districts Garden Program. 22120, accept a grant award from the Oregon State Library, Library Services and Technology Act Program, and direct the Finance Director to submit an amendment to appropriate the grant funding in the fiscal year 2022-23 recommended budget. 22121, Resolution Number 4788, approve a reclassification of 1.0 FTE Project Manager 2 in the Community Development Department's Site Development to a 1.0 FTE Project Engineer 2 and approve the Transfer of Appropriations Resolution. 22122, Resolution Number 4789, Resolution Delegating Limited Authority to the City Manager to Negotiate a Replacement Intergovernmental Agreement with Clean Water Services. 22123, authorize the City Manager to Sign an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Gresham for Reciprocal Information Sharing between PSNET and Gresham's Report Management Systems. 22124, Resolution Number 4790, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Sign a Lease Agreement between KND Stevens LLC and the City of Beaverton. 22125, Resolution Number 4791, a resolution to recharacterize Fund 102's Operations from directly recording the sources and uses of the American Rescue Recovery Act's Federal Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds to an ARPA matching fund for Tranche 1 and Tranche 2 allocations. Now let's translate that into Albanian and back and see what it comes out as. 22126, Resolution Number 4792, Special Purpose Funding Budget Resolution to Adjust the Receipt of American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Agenda Bill 22127, authorize the City Manager to Sign the Waterline Construction and Cost Reimbursement Agreement with Lennar Northwest LLC for Construction of Non-Potable Water Pipeline at the South Cooper Mountain Heights Phase 2B and 3 Development. And 22128, authorize the Mayor to Sign an Intergovernmental Agreement with Twelton Valley Water District for Water System Interconnection at Southwest Kemmer Road. Then, acting as the Contractor Review Board, we are almost finished. 22129, a Contract Amendment, authorize a Contract Extension for up to two years for annual financial audit services with Talbot, Corvola and Warwick LP. 22130, a Contract Award for the Allen Boulevard 92nd Avenue Path Project, CIP 3112, and 22131, Resolution Number 4793, a Resolution of Intent to Purchase, Acquire, Enter Upon and Appropriate Property for the Construction, Operation and Maintenance of the Tile Flat Road Water Pump Station Facility, CIP Number 4142.
Second. All right, then moved and seconded. Any discussion on this very lengthy contract review or whatever we call this? Sorry, it's been a long day. Any discussion on any of that? All right, seen none. Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Hartmeyer-Pigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Sensusi?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes. All right, thank you. We have three proclamations I'm issuing tonight. I'll read the first two and Counselor Mitchell has agreed to read the third one. So proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated May 11th through 17th, 2022 as National Police Week and May 15th each year to be Police Memorial Day in honor of the federal, state and municipal officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty. Whereas it is known that all police officers face serious danger and too often those dangers lead to serious injury and unfortunately, some are killed in the line of duty. And whereas the City of Beaverton is proud of our law enforcement officers and wishes to recognize their commitment to public safety profession. And whereas the Beaverton Police Department is dedicated to preserving human rights, lives and dignity. Whereas Beaverton Police are committed to the highest professional standards working in partnership with our community members to improve safety and quality life for all. Now for I, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim May 15th, 2022 as Police Memorial Day and May 11th through 17th as Police Week in the City of Beaverton. I would also like to issue a proclamation for Memorial Day. Whereas it is a joint resolution approved May 11th, 1950, Congress provided the Memorial Day should be set aside as a day of prayer for permanent peace. And whereas this day honors the more than 1 million people in the United States Military, including nearly 6,000 Oregonians who gave their life and service to our country from the Civil War to the present. And whereas Memorial Day serves as a solemn reminder of horrors of war, it is bitter aftermath of sorrow. Whereas this day has traditionally been devoted to paying tribute to loved ones who lie in hollowed graves throughout the land, having sacrificed their lives that war might end. And whereas Americans, we enjoy tremendous freedoms and privileges thanks to the selfless service people who gave their lives to protect those freedoms of our nation. Whereas the contribution and sacrifice made by service people, whether on our own soil or abroad, deserve our greatest respect. And whereas some of service people have left us, their bravery remains. And we proudly pay tribute to their memory on Memorial Day. I, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim Monday, May 30th, 2022 as Memorial Day in the City of Beaverton and ask all residents to honor and give thanks our military heroes who have given great sacrifice with their lives. Many of each will be remembered as incredible cries to maintain our freedom. Also, just a public service announcement. Memorial Day is not a day to thank service members for their service. That is Veterans Day. So make sure that that piece is remembered as well. Counselor Mitchell, if you wouldn't mind reading the third one?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Beaverton celebrates its strength as one of the most diverse cities in Oregon, where one in three residents identifies as a person of color and one in five was born outside of the United States. And whereas Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities in Beaverton represent over 16% of the population and include dozens of languages and cultures. And whereas we recognize the generations of Asian-American and Pacific Islanders who have enriched Beaverton's history, local economy and cultural vibrancy and who are instrumental to our future success. And whereas the month of May was chosen for this Heritage Month to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May 7th, 1843 and the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10th, 1869, for which the majority of the tracks were laid by Chinese immigrants. And whereas AAPI communities have preserved, have persevered over discrimination, exclusion, persecution, incarceration and disparities and continue to experience injustices today. And whereas fear and ignorance about the COVID-19 pandemic have led to scapegoating of AAPI communities and a significant rise in hateful rhetoric, bullying, harassment and violence. And whereas misinformation about COVID-19 has impacted the well-being of Asian-Americans, Pacific Islanders and those perceived as such threatening livelihoods of communities already facing economic hardship. And whereas AAPI Heritage Month is a time to celebrate the remarkable achievements and pay tribute to the generations of Asian-American and Pacific Islanders that have contributed to the American history, society and culture. Now therefore, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, does hereby proclaim May 2022 as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Beaverton and encourage all to observe this month.
Thank you, Counselor Mitchell. We have two presentations and two work sessions this evening, so we're going to move on to our first presentation of the evening. Agenda Bill 22132, Annual State of the District Address from Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue. And I believe we have Cheese Weiss with us. So the floor is yours when you are ready.
I am here. Can you hear me okay, Mayor?
We can.
Well, good evening, Mayor Beatty and members of the council. It's good to be back in Beaverton. I'll remind you, my hometown where I started my life and schooling. So it's good to be back. It's nice to see everyone again. To remind the council, annually, we try to get in front of all of our cities and myself or staff will come before you and kind of talk about what's been going on with Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue for the past year. And so I'm going to do my darndest to share the screen and see if this works. Can we see that okay? Awesome, fantastic. So as I said, this is the State of the District. It says 2022, but as you might imagine, it actually goes from July of 21 to about now. And we report on what we've done well, what we can work on and things that we really want to go after in the coming year. One little note that's not in my notes, but I wanted to tell the council is that this June, the end of June, the last official Beaverton firefighter will be retiring from Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue. And you go all the way back to 1994 in our academy, two individuals were selected to actually represent Beaverton Fire in case anything ever happened. And those were the last two official Beaverton firefighters. So Captain John Buller is actually going to retire at the end of June. So congratulations to him. So through ice storms, extreme heat waves, wildfires, and then our second year of a pandemic, Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue's objective and mission remain the same, provide fast and effective emergency services. And I can tell you that a few things have been challenges this year. One in particular was staffing. Either due to COVID-related illnesses, retirements or injuries, we found ourselves short-staffed like many fire departments. And of course, all kinds of businesses across this country. So what you see in the picture before you is our most recent academy. We have an academy that's in right now. They will graduate at the end of May, 1st of June. And then in August, we have another 24-person academy that will be starting their four-month academy. After that, Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue will be having two firefighter and paramedic academies each year for the foreseeable future. And this is due to the fact that we are having an unprecedented amount of retirements. This organization is going to look a lot different in the coming years. And quite frankly, I'm actually very excited to see that happen. It wouldn't be a good report card if I didn't tell you where we had opportunities to improve. And like I mentioned, we have a lot of retirements. Over 38% of our management and chief officers can retire in the next five years, 38%. So what we're doing extremely hard is getting personnel ready to go and take those new steps in their career. We have officer development programs. We have battalion chief development programs. We have battalion chief development programs. But it's not just on the line. We're starting initiatives and classes and training that helps the non-line prepare for their next role in the organization as well. Leaders come from across our organization. And so we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to prepare them for the future. On your left-hand side is Captain Berger. On your right-hand side is Captain Asparza. These are two of our newest captains at Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue. Captain Berger is our first female captain that we've had at Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue. And Captain Asparza is our first Latino captain that we've had in Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue. Quite frankly, it's hard to believe. I've been here 27 years. In the last 12 years, all we have really wanted to do was increase our diversity. And that, all the things we've tried to do, it still takes time. And so we're going to continue to do outreach. We're going to continue to do recruitment. And we're going to continue to try and prove ourselves as a more diverse organization. I can tell you that across the country, 4% of career firefighters are female. Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue is 7%. That is far too low. As I mentioned before, we started doing this more than 15 years ago. Active efforts to improve our diversity, equity and inclusion. I put inclusion on the Fire Chiefs Bullseye, which is the culture by which everybody carries themselves at Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue. We were doing all types of things to attract new firefighters. And it's always good to put faces in different positions across the organization like Captain Berger and Captain Asparza, so people can see themselves in our organization. It's critically important. We've had a very successful fire camp for girls over the past several years. That's the picture in the middle. It's 16 to 21-year-old females that come in for a weekend and they learn from firefighters just like themselves. We partner with Portland Fire and Rescue and fire agencies from all across the state and the Northwest. And it's a three-day weekend and every single event has been a huge success. There have been graduates from this program that are now firefighters in the Pacific Northwest. And I can't wait for Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue to grab one of these phenomenal females after they go through their classes and take our test. I'm looking forward to that. Many of our communities that we serve are diverse in nature and speak different languages. Some of our Spanish-speaking firefighters do provide content for our education services that we provide through Government Affairs and Community Services, but we can do better and we can find better ways to connect with our community. For about three years, we didn't have a solid community risk reduction program. It waned with retirements, but now we have reestablished it. We've assigned a manager to community risk reduction and we look forward to taking advantage of how we can outreach and interact with our communities to do better. Next year, part of community risk reduction will be the landlord apartment landlord program, wildfire prevention and care home engagement. Those are just three of several community risk reduction programs that you'll see in your communities in the near future. In terms of COVID and what we've done for COVID, we returned to normal operations March 1st. We're not quite totally up and running yet, but we're getting very close. We're revamping the entire board meeting process so that we can both be live in person and virtual on the internet. Supply chain challenges have made that take a little longer than we hoped, but we look to go back to in-person and virtual board meetings in the near future. We also hope to have our community rooms open again, which they've been closed as well since the pandemic began. But we're evaluating which rooms are utilized and which ones we can keep open or which ones we can repurpose. So that is coming soon too. This is a picture of earth. I'm not really sure where this picture came from, but this is to highlight the fact that last November, we are so grateful that our voters passed our bond measure. We had $122 million bond that we put in front of the voters. And we are so excited to be able to begin projects like new stations, station remodels, more newer updated apparatus and then a fairly large transformation to our training center, which is down off Tonkwin Road. If anybody's been to Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue's Training Center, it's the same training center that I started at in 1991. So it's been around a long time with not substantial changes. So we're looking forward to that. We did sell our first round of bonds. We got a very nice rate at 1.49 and we continue to maintain our AAA Moody's rating, which is huge. There are very few fire departments across the country that can say they have that rating. So we're very proud of that and the work that we've done with our finance division and our budget committees. So you might recognize this graphic. This is a graphic that we show every year and we individualize it to the city or the community or the county. And this kind of gives you an idea of the incidents that have occurred within the City of Beaverton. It might be hard to see if the pictures are blocking it, but on the right-hand side are two things that are fairly useful quickly at a glance. One is the heat map. And the darker it gets into that red and orange and yellows, that tells you that we go to that area a lot. Down below that in the columns is our run count in the City of Beaverton for the last five years. You'll notice in 2020, it dipped down. And we saw that across our service area, there was this dip down. We believe that people just weren't as inclined to dial 911 and they would rather stay at home or do something virtually or over the phone with their medical advisors. And then immediately in 21, it kicked right back up again. If you would actually take 2020 and put it to where it probably would be by average, it's probably the same general incline that we're having each year. But the demands for service are going up and they continue to go up and will continue to do so. In the City of Beaverton, you'll see at the top left corner, you're looking at around 72% of the calls are EMS. And the first column where it says 11,614, that's how they called 911. They said, I am having a medical emergency. After we get there, we reclassify it in our reports. And so it shows you around 72% of those calls are actually EMS calls. That is not uncommon. That is very typical across the district, across the state and across the country. You're around that 70 to 80% EMS calls and they continue to tick up. I'll talk a little bit more about that on another slide after this, but the other thing that I want to show you is we always take these five years of data. And this is what informs our decisions about where we put stations, where we put apparatus and where we put people. We are data-driven. It informs our decisions and then we act accordingly. So call volume continues to go up and we'll continue to monitor that. So I sort of alluded to this a second ago, but EMS calls are going up. And if you go across the country and talk to leaders in the emergency services world, they'll tell you that we have a significant problem. We have a challenge where calls are going up and we don't have the resources, personnel or money to respond to these types of calls. So we have to be creative. We have to be progressive and we have to find other ways to do business. To flash back a little bit into Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue's history, we started using medics, which is two-person paramedics on call. We started using rescues, which is a two-person firefighter paramedic on calls. And we started using cars, single-person paramedics responding to calls. We're trying to find ways to keep the heavy assets, the engines, the trucks, the rescues to stay in station and be ready to go for the big incidents. And then these other resources can manage the call volume. It's continuing to increase, as you noticed on that data sheet before. So how do we do it? And one way is this, and this is a community health and resource management program. It's called SHARM, which coincidentally sounds a lot like somebody in my EMS office. So I'm not sure if that's a coincidence or if that's just random luck that it's the same name. However, what this program is, and it's a pilot program that'll go for a year. This allows us to manage frequent users of 911 before they call 911. So if we can get people, if we can intervene and get them help and services and maybe alternate services before they call 911 or right after they call 911, the heavy assets, the engines, the trucks get a stay in the station. We've had good success so far with this. Our medical services officers handle a lot of this stuff from the office at first. And so it's another way that we are able to manage the calls for service without putting a heavy asset on the road. I'm very, very much in favor of pilot programs like this. But my philosophy with the fire district is that if we're going to do a program long-term, it can't rely on grants. It can't rely on donations. It has to work within the budget. And so we will continue to look for opportunities like this. We're also partnering in Clackamas County side of our district with some of the opioid crisis. And so we're putting units on the street to try a pilot program there. If these programs work in other areas, then certainly we can move them across county lines and city lines and into our jurisdiction and our district. The pandemic shined a very large bright on Washington County and the state of the EMS system. EMS in Washington County has gone without significant changes for 26 years. We started noticing this the first part of 2021, where we weren't having enough ambulances in the system because quite frankly, we just have one system in Washington County. We have fire resources with paramedics and then we have a private provider that typically transports. And when there's increased workload or increased load on the system, the system is not designed to react or change. And so in February of this year, we actually contracted with the private provider to have some of our transport resources put in the Washington County system in order to manage the calls for service to transport people to hospitals. This is not a surprise. The system is broken and we intend to work on fixing the system. In Washington County, you have a great advantage because the EMS Alliance was created to help manage the problems with the EMS system. We have new people at the county and the EMS office that we're working with. The Fire Chiefs in Washington County are the EMS Alliance. We are on the streets. We see the problems. And now we're going to work to start correcting those problems. So it's a tough situation to be in, but you have the right people at the table having the conversations to make your system in Washington County much better. So it was a big wildfire year again last year and not quite as big as the year before, but it was still a big year. We had the passage of legislation this last year on the Cent Bill 762, which was extremely important to wildfire efforts across the state. When we had our wildfire on Chehama Mountain Bald Peak several years ago, we did a large after-action report, which I think most people are familiar with, but it's a chance and an opportunity to step back and take a look at how you provided services, how you managed that incident from every area of the call, whether that's to food and SOX to incident management overall. We took a look at all of it and we created an after-action report, which is essentially a list of action items that we need to work on to improve our services in the wildfire arena. You may understand the fact that most of our firefighters are structural firefighters. We have a small group, around 60 of 460 firefighters that are actually highly trained in wildland firefighting. The rest of us, we grew up with structured firefighting and they are completely different. So one of the things that we've been doing over the past two years is increasing our training on wildland firefighting. Getting people to certifications and the training that they need so that they're comfortable fighting a wildfire. We also made sure we have the right equipment, tools and apparatus to fight wildfires effectively. My opinion, I don't think this is going to go away. We never thought before we'd see wildfires like this on our side of the mountains and we did. So we are going to be prepared. We're going to be prepared for you and our communities. And we'll continue to work on community risk reduction efforts that reduce and prevent fires in the wildland urban interface. That's certainly what's coming soon. And then I think some of you are familiar with Safety Matters, but we decided to go a little bit more technical and now we're electronic with Safety First. Safety Matters goes out as a mailer. We send that out all the time. Safety First is now going to go out and it's electronic version where you can access it online at tbfr.com. And it's a great way for us to push new efforts like you know, wildfire fighter risk and safety, electrical safety, falls and care homes, things of that nature. It's a one-stop shop for all of those items. And that concludes my report, State of the District for 2021, 2022. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have this evening. I can stop sharing too, I suppose. Let's see if I can figure that out.
Thank you. Counselor Hassan?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I really appreciated just like the data and the information. When you flashed up Charm, I was actually just in the mayor's office kind of talking about like mental health response and it got me super interested. How is this different or the same as like the mental health response team? And then what, what ways are we ensuring that there's like culturally responsive people going to these calls? Because I think sometimes what happens is there tends to be like a language barrier or a general misunderstanding on some of these phone calls.
Yeah, so where I believe it would be the same is that some of these patients that are having a behavioral health or mental health challenge or crisis at the time, those sometimes are the people that are actually calling 911. So we are actually, in that regard, some of them we are working with. They are part of that group, that subset that are frequently using 911. And now we either have to intervene with them or create policy of how we're going to respond to them. In terms of the latter part of your question, that is one of the challenges that we have. That is one of the challenges that we're trying to make sure we answer is how is everybody getting equal treatment across Washington County in every corner and even in the middle in Beaverton? It's difficult to do. We do have some resources that we have in our access. We can access county resources. We can access through the hospital system. We do have some firefighters that are bilingual. And then we have other resources that we can use in terms of interpreting languages and communicating with them. But it's absolutely something we have to work on. There's no question.
And then is there a way to ask for this? Like how does this team like respond versus? Like how does that, what is that point of intervention?
That's, it's typically organic. So this is something that comes from the crews. And what they'll recognize is that we have a problem. This individual or this group of individuals is continuing to call. We kind of have a threshold of what's normal and then what's considered not normal in terms of calls and call volume. And at that point, a medical services officer, part of our EMS division, intervenes and then starts working with caregivers, starts working with mental health, starts working with any of the resources that are out there. But I will tell you, the resources are very scarce. It's hard to get some of those resources that we hear about out to our calls. So So where they intervene is, is a ground level. I, I can give you another example, uh, similar to this was we were noticing a high call volume at Sunset Transit. And then they started doing the data and they started doing, well, when is this occurring? And then they started pinpointing when it was occurring. So then we started to work with Trimed. I don't want to give all the trade secrets away, but they started making some changes as well to intervene and help slow those, those calls for service at the Sunset Transit Center. So it's, it's a lot of different projects. It's, you know, where do we fit in with CAT in Washington County? Where do we fit in with the mental health response team? These are all questions I have. How do, how do we change our service model to, to meet the needs, meet the demands of the community? And then how is it paid for, right? So it's, it's, it's a heavy topic. It's a large topic. And I just keep hoping to bring all the right people to the table and, and we can have those conversations.
Well, thank you. I, this is like, we know that the pandemic had caused this. And, and it's just, I think it'll get worse before it gets better. So I'm glad to see that you, y'all are doing this. And I hope that we can hold hands together and keep it going. So thanks.
Counselor Tivnun?
Thank you. Um, two things. One was on the, the slide you had that had the, all the statistics and data and calls by, uh, hour of day. I noticed there was one category on there that was called good intent and I wasn't familiar with that. Can you, can you describe what that means? And then I have one other question after that.
Yeah, but staff is going to make fun of me for messing this all up. But es- essentially what it means is that they called nine one for a particular reason when we get there. It really wasn't any of those reasons. They just needed help. There was a question. It didn't fit into another category in our reporting system. I know there's a litany of what those actually are and I'd have to ask staff exactly which ones they are. But when I was a firefighter and lieutenant, I'd go, doesn't fit in that one. It was a good intent call. And, uh, they had a good intent. They called for a good reason. It wasn't what they called for and the problem was, was solved.
Cat in the tree kind of stuff?
Sometimes that's it. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, well, the other thing, talking about wildfires making their way closer to urban areas. I grew up in a, a town at the very base of Central Valley, California. Um, right before the, uh, the mountain range separates that from LA County on the other side. Lot of wildfires in the, that mountain range, Angeles National Forest. My father, he, he wasn't a firefighter by trade, but putting himself through, uh, school, both in high school, which I don't think they'd allow anymore, through junior college and then into college, worked summers. Um, helping out, going out and clearing brush, cutting lines, um, learned how to cook. When he was sleeping over, uh, in the weeks, shifts that he would do. And I was curious about that. If you see any opportunities that we could put out to the Beaverton community for young folks that might want to get involved and, and learn about what part they could play, especially in, uh, peak time. If there's ever, ever, um, something that unfortunately becomes more of a recurrence every summer. Um, if there's any kind of programming, especially as it relates to recruitment, to get youth involved in some meaningful way.
It's an excellent question and there are, there are ways to do that. I know, I know hundreds of people that they did the exact same thing. Where they, they use that wildland fire experience in the summertime to pay for college and pay for other things they need to pay for, actually pays fairly well. It's through the Oregon Department of Forestry primarily. So that's, that's where I would point someone if they had questions about, can I be a wildfire fighter? There are private entities that do the exact same thing across the state. There's hotshot groups, uh, that come from Oregon and travel all across the Western United States during the wildfire season. So statewide, it's, it's ODF, it's Oregon Department of Forestry, but then there's also hotshot crews and other contract crews that they can look to, to, to get a job in the wildfire service. From, from my perspective, where I'd like to see us go is develop a program that during the wildland season, they're deploying and helping other areas in need if they're not helping right here. And then during the off-season, why wouldn't they be doing those mitigations, things that prevent a wildfire from happening in your backyard? Whether it's thinning, clearing, counseling, educating, any of those preventive means. What's the sweet spot there where I can do that and it pays for itself? And there are fire departments in the Western United States that have similar programs. Uh, it's not necessarily a student program. It's part of the, the fire department. But I would be very interested in, uh, and looking into that. I've, I've had conversations already and I will continue to do so. I think there are opportunities there. But yeah, for the other ones, it's, uh, ODF and private contractors in the state.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I don't think, uh, you have any more questions out of the hot seat. Um, I just want to thank you for, uh, joining us this evening. And just, uh, you know, I've been invited twice to the, to the, uh, Young Girls Fire Camp and it is awesome to see. And they even let the mayor climb up on the ladder and in the buildings. And makes me sometimes wonder if I'm right in the right profession. It almost sold me on a job in firefighting. So, uh, it is a fun, action-filled weekend. And so I'm so excited you're able to do it, uh, this year coming out of COVID. Um, you know, just as the mayor of Beaverton, we're very thankful for TVFNR and the services you provide our community here and region wide. I know we have some of the highest producing, uh, fire, uh, stations by volume. And, um, one day I hope that goes down, but we know that your crews are responding like crazy and doing things under extreme circumstances. Wildfires, smokestorms, COVID, and it seems like right after we climb and catch our breath, something else is coming along the way. So thank you for the, the great partnership, um, and our continued work together. I am looking forward to the day that we no longer have to celebrate first women, Latinx leaders. And I can't believe you, it took this long to get a woman fire captain, but I'm excited this year. And, and who knows, maybe in the future a woman fire chief, uh, is next on the agenda. So.
Well, Mayor Bailey, thank you so much for going to those fire camps, by the way. That, that's awesome. I, I love, uh, people in the community and people in prominent positions being there so they can see themselves and other people. And you're absolutely right. I will tell you though, on the horizon, we have people internally that are unbelievably amazing. And, and I don't know if it's the next one, but maybe the next one. And, uh, I'm so excited for the future of this organization. So thank you so much.
Awesome. Well, thank you for joining us this evening and have a great rest of the night.
Thank you. You too.
All right. We're on to our next agenda bill, two, two, one, three, three, Housing Talk Series Meeting Number Two. And I think we have Javier with us this evening. If you have any friends with you, please introduce them and get rolling.
Uh, we, uh, good afternoon, uh, Mayor Beatty, councilors. Uh, my name is Javier Mena, uh, for housing manager at the CEO of, uh, the city with, uh, through the CDD Department. Uh, with me has been Ed Valdez, our, our region coordinator, as well as, uh, some expert panelists that Beannet will be, who will have the pleasure of, uh, introducing. Um, I'm just going to go through a quick PowerPoint and then we'll get right to it, if you don't mind. As we had talked about last time we were here, we, um, wanted to engage in a series of conversations um, that kind of bring up to date as to where we are at with housing and the challenges um, associated with it. And I wanted to share with you, kind of remind you of the calendar. Uh, so today we're talking about homeownership. Uh, next month we will be talking about preservation, um, and displacement prevention. Uh, following B Housing Development, homelessness, and then talk about next steps. Just wanted to share, you know, as you all know, I, I'm, no, we've talked about this, some of the benefits and, uh, in terms of homeownership and the challenges that we face. And we'll hear a lot more about those benefits and challenges from our panelists. And really talk about, uh, improvements and things that we need to look at as moving forward. Uh, one of the things I really want you to think about as we hear the panelists is please to, uh, if you feel the need to go ahead and engage, let's ask the questions. It's, we're hoping that it's interactive, uh, because the information is for you so that we can have, uh, a very, uh, media discussion in terms of the strategies and, and what we do moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Beannet, um, to talk about the panels.
Hey everyone. Good evening to the mayor and city council. I appreciate, uh, the time and having, uh, you here. Uh, amazing folks who are part of the community, who are part of this, uh, topic specifically around homeownership. I do want to mention before we kind of bring those folks to, uh, the screen is, you know, I know time is always of essence. Um, so if we don't get to all of your questions or thoughts, um, just know that we're taking notes. Um, so we can definitely, uh, keep that in mind and, and, and get back to you on that. So I, I don't think I introduced myself, but I'm Beannet Valdez. I use she-they pronouns. I work here with the city and housing and I have the privilege of working really closely with the community. Uh, and, um, that's who we're bringing, uh, to you to hear today. So, um, I'm sure you don't want to hear much from me, but you want to hear from the, the folks, um, that are joining us today. So I'm going to just give them, uh, you know, a minute each to kind of share who they are, uh, who they represent and why they're here. And then we're just going to jump into those questions. I know we're talking a little bit about benefits, challenges and improvement. So, um, we're, we can take down the screen because I want folks to, to see, uh, one another. But, um, yeah, maybe let's go for, uh, Victor. Do you want to introduce yourself? Are you there? Well, there you go. I don't think we can hear you. There you go.
Sorry, sound technology. All right. Um, not good morning, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Victor Caesar. Uh, so by day I am actually the Director of Real Estate Development at the Vancouver Housing Authority, where I oversee new construction and preservation of housing at throughout Vancouver, Washington and Clark County, Washington. Uh, but today in this capacity, I'm actually here as the Chair of the Board of Directors for Proud Ground. As the majority of the team is at a conference that learning more about community land trust right now. So I stepped in today. Uh, so I'm glad to be here. Uh, so Proud Ground, uh, is the region's largest community land trust committed to creating permanently affordable housing, uh, throughout our region. Uh, so Proud Ground is a HUD certified housing counseling agency. And we're also a real estate broker advocacy and development partner. Uh, we work in partnership with Habitat for Humanity, uh, and we target services for families ranging between thirty-five to eighty percent of the area median income. And really we have a focus on Black, Indigenous people of color, uh, who are left behind due to, uh, housing policies of the past. Um, so I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and I hope I do proud ground proud tonight.
Thanks Victor. Heidi, do you want to go?
Sure. Hi. I am Heidi Martin. I'm the Lending Director with the Portland Housing Center. We are also a HUD accredited housing counseling agency. We also specialize in down payment assistance. We have lending services. Um, our down payment assistance products try to fill the gap for low-income home buyers and help get those underserved communities into housing.
Thanks Heidi. Steve?
Hey everybody. I'm Steve Messanetti, CEO at Habitat for Humanity Portland Region. He's he-him pronouns. And we are, um, an affiliate of Habitat that actually got formed a couple of years ago when, um, the affiliate that was serving, um, Hillsborough and Beaverton, well, I'm at West Habitat and the Portland area, Portland, Massachusetts Habitat merged together to form a larger regional habitat. And our organization is focused on homeownership. We, um, have built over six hundred homes and sold homes, um, throughout the region. Over fifty of those homes are in Beaverton. And, and we've got actually a sixteen-home community under construction right now in Beaverton. Uh, our main focus is really on providing homeownership opportunities to households under sixty percent AMI. And so our average household income that, of, of families that buy homes through Habitat is about forty-five thousand dollars a year. We build mostly three and four-bedroom homes, so larger homes. We tend to have larger families that are buying those homes. Um, for example, that site in Beaverton, right on, um, Allen is, um, going to have about sixty people that move into those sixteen homes. And over eighty percent of the families are households of color. And we've not had any foreclosures through the pandemic or the Great Recession. Um, and all of our homes are permanently affordable in partnership with Proud Ground. And that's really important to us with all the investment that goes into making a home affordable to a low-income family, that that home is affordable to the second and third buyer as well. And we, uh, also have a home repair program. That's not the topic for today. It's, it sounds like next month's focus. But we provide critical home repairs to low-income homeowners and then have our Habitat restores. And our, um, Restore on Millicom, I just learned today, um, was voted number one home furnishing store in Beaverton by the Beaverton community, the Beaverton Resource Guide. So I'll close on that. Thanks.
That is an accomplishment, Steve. Uh, I don't know if we have Khalid here. Um, I saw him earlier and I don't know if he's here with us. Hmm. Okay. I guess he, he's not on here. Um, he was a representative for a homeowner and wanted to share your story with him. Um, and I'm, I, I saw him earlier, but I guess he's not here. But we can kind of move along. Uh, I want the panel to kind of really have time to share some of their thoughts around this. So our first question is really around benefits. What have, um, you as providers in the community have seen have been a benefit to homeowners? Uh, maybe strategies that have been really helpful in, in helping attain people, uh, with homeownership? So, um, Victor, do you want to jump us off?
Um, so yeah, in the last ten years, uh, Proud Ground has created twenty-seven permanently affordable homes in the city of Beaverton. And really that's thanks in part to city funding that you all have provided, um, that has allowed us to do that. Uh, and really our model for permanent affordable homeownership works at because the twenty-seven homes remain affordable for the future community members. Um, and really that helps homeowners themselves get, uh, stable, secure, uh, and they get to access benefits. Um, and really the main, uh, goal was for, uh, Proud Ground homeowners to build well. Uh, so when a Proud Ground home was sold in Beaverton back in twenty seventeen, uh, the home itself was sold to another low to moderate income home buyer. Uh, and the original homeowner was able to walk away with around forty thousand dollars in equity. Uh, and that was only after three years of owning the home. Uh, and really studies show that most homeowners, after they leave our program, go on to desire market rate home. Um, so they've moved on to a market rate home and then we've now put another low to moderate income home buyer, uh, in that home. Uh, and on average, uh, homeowners that are in our program that have been in the program over ten years are walking away with around a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollars in equity when they sell their home. As really the community, the community itself benefits by having a housing stock that stays affordable, uh, and really building future wealth. Uh, and from what we've seen, you know, families can use that to either send their kids to school, uh, you know, purchase a vehicle, really the guys, the one that.
Thanks Victor. Heidi, do you want to share?
Sure. So what we've seen as one of the major benefits to homeownership is creating generational wealth and moving people into homes that they can then pass on down to future generations. Um, to create that general wealth. So we had a client that we interviewed just about a month ago. She used our services to buy her first home, was able to get enough equity and save enough money to buy her second home and she sold her first home to her sister. So she was internally creating that with the family. But one of the barriers we see is that most people can afford a mortgage payment, but they can't save for a down payment. So down payment assistance is absolutely key in what we need to get these low-income home buyers into housing and start creating that generational wealth.
I'll jump in and add, um, um, Victor said it, but, um, I think that one of the greatest benefits for, for, for homeowners is stability. The, um, initial, um, just physical stability that it provides for families, not having to move again and again. Uh, my wife works at, in Chehalis Elementary there on Allen and sees firsthand how, um, disruptive it is for kids to be moving in and out of schools. Um, in many cases, the whole classroom is disrupted because of the number of kids that are having to move. Um, and then also the financial stability. Um, so many renters now are paying more than half their income. Actually, one in five renters is paying more than half their income on rent, which doesn't leave enough for other life necessities, which, um, um, and then through all of our programs, we ensure that, that, that mortgage payment is, is no more than thirty percent of the income, which is obviously a much more stable, um, base to be working from. Uh, so the result is that kids do better in school, their parents do better at work, entire families are healthier and happier. Uh, the health implications are significant. Um, many households that we work with are moving out of, um, overcrowded and moldy apartments. Um, in fact, seventy-nine percent of households that have a family member with asthma or other respiratory illnesses have reported no longer having symptoms once they moved into their healthy habitat home. Um, and over ninety percent of kids who grow up in habitat homes graduate. Um, so we definitely see the success. Um, and one, one family that I know, the Gomez Ramos family, uh, moved into their home in twenty seventeen on Allen Boulevard, um, a community of about fifteen homes. Um, before Habitat, um, the two parents and their two kids. the two parents and their two kids shared a house with two other families. So they were living three families in a house. Now they own their three bedroom Habitat home. The kids are doing great. They have an affordable payment. And obviously, their life is much different. And we see that again and again. And it's and and they work, both of them actually, but work for for new seasons. So they both have decent jobs, working full time, but still not making enough to to get by on the market.
So let's make there's some questions from what I see, Counselor Allison. Tivnan, I'm sorry, had a question.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you want them to just ask questions or wait till the end. How is, what is your preference?
Go for it. Go for it.
Yes, please. We can proceed with questions that that way, you know, at the same time, that way we have the benefit of the of the panel.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I'm so excited about this. I love these type of programs. For most of my young life, there were nine of us that lived in a two bedroom home with one bathroom. And that was, we were with my grandparents and then my also my great grandparents all together. And it was, it was insane. So these, when I hear about these stories, and I wish our homeowner was here, I just know that it it changes people for for such a great way. But how do we keep it affordable? So how do these sales go to market? So if I own one of these homes and I want to sell it to my sister or something like that, how how does that work? Is it just a standard real estate transaction? Or what does that look like?
I'll answer that. Yeah, it's just a standard real estate transaction. You can prepare. You don't even need to use a Realtor if you don't want to. We do always recommend it. So somebody is representing your legal interests. But if you didn't want to, you could just write out something on a piece of paper with the terms and sell to your sister at whatever terms you agreed to. It would still have to go through an escrow and a title and the general mortgage qualifications. But yeah, it's just as simple as that.
When it's marketed, is there anything that speaks to affordability at all? Or or does it just turn? Because the whole point is for it to stay affordable, right? How how does that happen when you sell it? Is there a cap on that? Or what does that look like?
Not with traditional housing, no. Those are considered deed restrictions and and most lenders frowned upon them. It's different when you're talking a Habitat or a Proud Ground model. That is their model, and that's how it's done. But with traditional market housing, there is no way to keep it affordable without creating deed constraints.
Okay, Javier, can I get you to send me one of those models? Because I think I really, I can think of a few people in my life that, you know, sharing something like this would be amazing and to really understand. Because you can give someone a link and you can tell them to go here. But when you actually really put it out there for them, it makes it more of a reality. So thank you for everything you do.
Counselor Mitchell will provide the two models. One is the Habitat or the Program Model, which is long term affordability. The other is the Down Payment Assistance assistance to buy a home on the first face. So we'll provide that.
Counselor Hudson?
Yeah, so I'm just, if we could like rewind for a second, like, how do families get connected to you? Because that was my big, like, all right, so we're doing this, but like, how do people find you for this?
Most people find us by word of mouth. We've been in existence for thirty years. So generally, we have fifteen hundred new registrants per year. And we're serving, we close about five hundred new homeowners on an annual basis through a variety of different services. And ours is primarily word of mouth.
And that's Portland?
Yes, Portland Housing Center.
I'd love to hear from others. Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, do you want to go, Steve?
I'll go. Yeah, sure. So and and it's the same, actually. We, the most common way folks come to us is word of mouth, often from households who've purchased homes from us in the past. We've also been around forty years, sold six hundred homes. Many of our buyers do come from partner agencies. So it's word of mouth, sometimes through partners. So we work with Biennastar, and they have clients that have been working towards saving, and they might move out of one of their units, freeing that up for another renter and sort of graduate into ownership. And but we just finished a round of selection for homes in Beaverton, Hillsborough and Portland. And we had over eleven hundred applicants for thirty five homes. So there's definitely no shortage of interest.
And I guess I would third that, that it's really word of mouth. For us, we have an outreach team, so they do a lot of work going out into the community to spread word about the Proud Ground programs. And then it's also working with different partner agencies. And I work at a housing authority, so it's when folks are really, you know, at the point where they're ready to move on past just being a renter, you know, and connect them to agencies like Proud Ground and Habitat for Humanity to take that next step. So I would say that. And then, yeah, folks that are in the program, just spreading the word and really being sort of that advocate to explain like how the program benefited them and spreading that.
And then in terms of like, kind of, obviously, there's a waitlist, right? Like, how, is it just, are you letting folks know, like, it'll be a year? Or like, what is the general communication point?
Yep, we at Proud Ground have a waitlist. And so it's a waitlist depending upon the different, because we get funding from different counties and municipalities. So it's like, if you're looking for a home in Beaverton versus looking for one in, you know, just Washington County, getting on the appropriate waitlist, and then you just, we just break our way through the list.
And whereas at Habitat, we actually don't keep a waitlist. We do selection for the homes that we have that we expect to have completed over the next year and a half and have selection every six months. So we have our kind of selection round that folks would apply to and and then select folks based on their qualifications each round.
Counselor Hart, may I pray?
Thank you. I have two questions. One is kind of to continue on Counselor Mitchell's question. I'm curious, like, how does a home stay permanently affordable and the homeowner still gain equity, especially in like, a market like right now, where, you know, like, I have so many friends and family, right, who are trying to buy a home that cannot afford a home in Beaverton, and they they might actually be at AMI and cannot afford a home. So I'm curious, what what does that look like? How do you keep it permanently affordable and they can still earn equity in their home?
I can, I can start that. And Victor, I'm sure can go into the details further. There's a few different components. First of all, the initial sales price sets the base price, and that's based on a kind of affordability calculator. So for the home that we just sold in Beaverton to through Proud Ground, the sales price was right around two hundred and fifty thousand for a home that appraised for about four hundred thousand. So that base sales price sets the first price and is affordable to that first buyer. There's then a formula that starts from that price and has a share of appreciation between the homeowner and the basically the the market. And that's typically with the Proud Ground model, that's twenty five percent of the appreciation. So if that house increased in appreciation over so many years by a hundred thousand dollars, twenty five thousand dollars would get added to the sales price. Now, the equity for the family is growing in every house payment they make on principal as well. So they get that that equity as well. And with Habitat, we actually are able to guarantee a mortgage for them so that it's, all of our homes right now are getting a two and a half percent interest mortgage. So it's significantly below market, which means they're getting more principal built up more quickly.
Yeah, no, that was pretty much exactly what I would have said. And I think the only thing for the Proud Ground model, so if a homeowner puts in money for an improvement to their property, we don't capture that. So like, they get that back. So if they put, you know, and there's some depreciation, but you know, if you installed, you know, hardwood floors in your house, you know, you should get that back because you put that money into your home.
Very cool. Okay, thank you. That was really helpful. And then my other question is, recently, I have heard some criticism. We are coming up on an election cycle. I am a huge supporter of these programs, so please don't see my question as being a criticism from me. But I've heard some criticism of of the city of Beaverton putting money into something like the Proud Ground program. And so I'd love to hear why it's a good investment for us to do this. You shared a lot of really great benefits. But, you know, can you share a little bit more about, like, why is it a good investment for cities like us to continue to invest in these types of programs?
Yeah, well, I don't know if it's easier to explain sort of the barriers that make it the why it's a good way to go. But, you know, right now, what we are seeing are that home buyers are having a really hard time just competing in the market. So even with the down payment assistance, they're getting outbid, you know, homes are selling fifty, seventy five thousand dollars above asking price. And folks are waiving appraisals and waiving inspections. And a lot of times with the down payment assistance, you know, that's not an option for the home buyers that we're working with. So having programs like this just really gives them an edge to get at. And, you know, these homes stay affordable. There are other models out there where once, you know, you put in eighty thousand for down payment, and then a few years later, it's sold. And, you know, that eighty thousand dollars is lost. And so I think with the model that we have and what Habitat has, you know, it's, this home is permanently affordable. So you've guaranteed, you know, right now, we only have twenty seven in Beaverton, but we're hoping to grow that, that, you know. So that's what I would say.
Yeah, I would say, in in terms of why invest in homeownership, and I think that the answer there is simple, that we have residents that can't afford to stay, and we need residents to work and help run our city and make it great. And we're losing them because they can't afford to stay, but we really can't afford to lose them. And so by investing in homeownership, working households from the community have the opportunity to stay, build up equity like others. In Beaverton, like most places in the country, people of color own homes at about half the rate of their white counterparts. So this is an equity issue as well. But it gives people and their children the opportunity to to reach their full potential by having that stability that comes only with homeownership. And while we don't like to think about it, most of, most white households generations ago also got help buying their first homes through the GI Bill and other things that were leaving others out. And we don't think of those as as subsidies, but they actually were. But so by making these subsidies available to households to buy their first home, I think that pays back not only to that family into for generations, but really to the community by having those stable households be able to continue to contribute.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, you just brought up something that kind of gets to the kind of a question, kind of observation, just food for thought, was the GI Bill. And I was thinking back to the Great Recession. And if I'm remembering correctly, there was such a bottoming out of the housing market, like a complete reversal of what we're seeing now, that the federal government was trying to entice people into buying homes and was offering for first time home buyers like ten thousand dollars to go towards their down. What a different world. But I've been thinking about this a lot lately, and I did some research on it. And it's, I'm not the only one thinking about this. You know, a lot of people are familiar with what a five twenty nine account is, which is where you can set up. And it's a tax free savings account that's invested and grows over time. That is for your child or yourself, someone in your household to use towards their education. As long as it's used towards education, you don't have to pay taxes on it, which is amazing. And I've seen people set this up while they're still pregnant, have a baby shower, and that's the gift they ask people to give them. It's just throw money into that account. We were good on blankets and and books and whatnot. People really work hard to fill that, to to help them get closer to being able to somewhat afford college for their kids. Why can't we do that for down payments and give people that option to divert some of their income or gifts from family or friends into an account that goes towards down payment and closing costs? And I did some research, and there was a bill in Congress, died in committee, it looks like, or no, it died on the floor back in twenty twenty. So it's out there. It's called the American Dream Down Payment Act. And I know Oregon has done some really exciting stuff, like cutting out stuff like with Oregon Saves that was really championed by AARP, which is really for the future retirees and fifty five plus crowd to help them save for retirement in businesses that are too small to really afford to have a 401K plan. The state of Oregon has now created that. So you can start saving from the very first job that you've got, even if it's just a very small percentage of your wages. So it just makes me think that we should be doing something that's agitating on this to help move this forward, because this is a big potential component to, maybe it doesn't solve for now, but it could be a huge help for people down the road. And what can cities like Beaverton do to 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 advocate to our senators? What can organizations like yours do to try and get something like that passed so that we can be giving people yet another tool to to sock away funds? Just throw that out there and get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's great. I think others would agree. Almost every household that we help get into a home, there is a long list of different kind of weaved together subsidies and supports and whether from the city, from state, from federal, from private sources, from banks, et cetera, that make that work. And so something like that would just be another tool that would would get us a step closer to making it work for more households. In Oregon, we do have the Individual Development Accounts, which is a matched savings account opportunity for homeownership and for other purposes as well, where Heidi probably knows this better than I do, but I think the the match now is six to one or five to one match.
It's on a sliding scale based upon household income, but one of the best things that happened over the last few years is that each household member can now have an individual account as opposed to being grouped together as a couple. So it's additional monies they can use, really twice as much money as they used to be able to get to use toward the purchase. And generally, the buyer saves about two thousand dollars, and it's matched anywhere between six and nine thousand, depending upon their household structure.
I love this conversation because y'all are hitting on all the questions. And I know I'm I'm writing down notes about some of the barriers and strategies that y'all had mentioned around inequities, competing in the market, you know, affordability. I want to kind of continue to ask the panelists, what other barriers are y'all also, like, just additionally witnessing for potential homeowners? Also, some of the strategies that I feel like have been mentioned. But maybe other creative strategies that you want to be able to to share out loud into the space. Love to hear it.
What I'm seeing the most right now is the just the market conditions. There are so few homes available, and the competition is so fierce for them. Rising prices, rising interest rates. I'm having to call clients on a weekly basis and reduce their qualifications and what they can qualify for. We also manage your homeownership programs for down payment assistance. And I know in the past, we've talked about this before, but one of the barriers to getting those dollars out is the inability to open it up to anyone who wants to move to Beaverton. Right now, it's structured, so it's for Beaverton residents only, and it's a pretty small footprint. So if we were able to open that up to anybody who wanted to move to the city and become a community member, I think that would help that program move more quickly.
Can I ask a follow up question to that? Because it it seems like to me that there is definitely enough need here. So is it a advertising issue of people coming through the door? Not that I'm internally imposed to the idea of people moving here, want to live here. It's a very desirable area. But I would, with how much, fifty percent of our community rents? So I can't imagine there is a deficit of people that want to apply for this program.
Well, it could be a little of both. It could be a lack of of marketing. And most of the interest from folks that I hear about don't currently live in the city. So maybe, I I think Javier and I at one point had talked about marketing to renters. And then I think the pandemic hit, and, you know, with everything, things kind of fell away. But that might be a good idea, too.
Because I think from, I'll speak for myself only, that for me to want to expand the program the way you're talking about, I would want to have some kind of fallback to tell the community that we've tried, because this money is being generated by current taxpayers, those that are renting. And so it's a challenging position, I think, for us sometimes to take that money and redirect it to people that have not paid into the tax system. I think we become more sharply criticized when we do things like that. My other question was for Steve, when you mentioned your two point five percent interest rate, what bank is backing those? How is that loan backed? That's a really low interest rate.
Yeah, so that's unique to Habitat for Humanity, because we are guaranteeing that mortgage. So the bank is providing a lower rate because Habitat is taking the risk out of it and saying that if that mortgage were to miss, if that pay, if a family were to miss two payments, we would actually buy that loan from the bank and work with that family to either catch up, or if we had to foreclose, we would resell that house to another. And work with that family to either catch up or if we had to foreclose, we would and resell that house to another household. Um, so we're getting, um, we're we're kind of putting Habitat's balance sheet on the line. In order to not only get them that better rate, but in our case. Families would probably not qualify for the loan otherwise because they don't have as good credit and and so forth. Um, so we do um. Guarantee those.
That's how the VA home loan is backed as well to drop in like that way. And the Oregon State has a very particular VA. Housing program that exists outside of the federal program that has its interest rate just went up. It was two percent. Now I think it's two point five as well. But I think that that to me, when I look at homeownership, and this is a particularly strong interest of mine, my husband and I are both first generation home. Um, homeowners through the Montgomery GI Bill. So we understand the power of purchasing a home and the power of like having a. A system that helped us do that. Uh, but it's that, it's the backing of the loan because a two percent loan versus a four and a half or five percent loan, your purchasing power is far greater. But how do agencies get into a position where they could back a loan? That is challenging for government to be in. And so those are the areas I've thought a lot about is how do we? How do we do that as government to back loans? Because I agree, a lot of prosperity was built in this country because of the Montgomery GI Bill that we've never seen happen again.
Yeah, I think I think that's right. I think there's other ways that you can have similar impacts. Um, so one of those that we're seeing is um, there's a ten year tax abatement opportunity that is allowed statewide. Um, in places where that's in place. The abatement on the improvements of the home are for ten years. And that equals about fifty thousand dollars more in buying power. Because the mortgage, the lender is looking at your your um income based on um. What you're going to have to pay towards taxes and insurance. Um, so that's fifty thousand dollars more that the buyer can afford in a mortgage and the cost to the city or the county is actually only about half of that over ten years. And so because of the the amortization of that, um, so the the impact is really big when when those tax abatements are in place.
Yeah, no, but um, just some other strategies that we've been seeing, um, as. You know, as communities continue to allocate CDPG and home funds to down payment assistance or setting up some type of dedicated funding source. Um, we're seeing it a lot for rental housing across the metro region. So why not do that for permanent affordable housing? Um, right now, a lot of communities are trying to figure out how to spend their ARPA funds. So using those funds at for down payment assistance would be great. Um, and then really it's just tackling like increasing the housing stock across the board. Um, I know. In Vancouver, Clark County, what we're talking about is, you know, yes, we need affordable, but you know, if you provide it at all ends of the housing spectrum, you'll really put it dead. Uh, so there are folks that are trapped in one home that really want to move up, but don't feel like they can, or. There are folks that want to retire, but if they sell their home, they don't have a place to go. So how do we just increase the housing stock in general so that there can be some more movement? Uh, and sales. And then lastly, you know, as a housing authority, we have restructured how we operate. So we are no longer really in the single family home like for moving to larger developments. So we have partnered with. Crowd, Ground and Habitat for Humanity to really like dispose of most of our single family homes. Um, so instead of putting them out in the open market, just out going straight uh to organizations that'll keep them permanently affordable. Um, that's what we're doing. So just some strategies.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'll I'll throw a quick couple of quick comments in. First of all, Ames. I I love what you've been saying. I love these programs. I love the fact that the city continues to support them and I hope we do find new and and. More interesting ways to continue to support them. But but with respect to that last point about um. Entry level housing for people who are able to a- afford market rate housing. One thing that we already know through our work on middle housing, which uh in Beaverton actually predated HB two thousand one, but we're obviously doing our work in the context of that. We need more condominiums. We need more small homes. We need more cluster housing. We need more ADUs. We need more of all of the above duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. So um, when when we have had conversations about South Cooper Mountain planning, when when we've had discussions about our middle housing code changes. Uh, what comes out of my mouth all the time is let's be as flexible as possible and let's allow height, greater heights, greater density, closer together. Greater mixes of housing types with within a commute, within a small part of the community. And it's for this very reason. It's because it's too expensive if all you build is twenty five hundred square foot houses on on quarter acre lots. I mean, it's. Nobody's going to be able to afford to live in the city if we do that. So flexibility, 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 and yes, absolutely, one hundred percent. Let's keep injecting money into these. Entry point ownership programs because they're really crucial. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to be mindful of time, but those were some of the questions that we had, but I just wanted to go. Maybe like a couple more minutes if anybody has last minute thoughts or um, anything that they want to share.
Oh, if I could jump in, I mean, I I think my biggest question, like, you know, if there is something you could leave us with, you know, as. Leaders that want to get after affordable housing in the city of Beaverton, like what's something you really want us to to be thinking about as we walk away or what's this? I wouldn't even say a strategy, right? Like a policy or a specific stance we can take to help us. Really achieve this specific goal. What would you say?
As I said earlier, it's it's all the little things. So um, all the all the different policies, whether that's a tax abatement, uh, waiving SDCs to to. Encourage more smaller affordable units, et cetera. Um, but I think the one thing I would say is land. So land is key. If we can get land, we'll build it. Um, so how can we, whether that's invest in land banks, identify properties that are city or publicly owned in some way? Um, how do we identify the properties and get them out of the market so that they're saved for affordable housing? Uh, that would be the 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 current strategy I would recommend.
Yeah, I was gonna, just gonna echo what Steve said. I was gonna say the same thing.
And see if there's ways to fend partnerships, you know, there. Developers that are building single family home neighborhoods and if there's a way to. Step in uh and work with those organizations to set aside some of the homes, you know, even if it's just a handful to just cut out the competition because you know. The home will sell, but really we just need to give, you know, the homeowners that we work with an opportunity to really, you know, have a first chance. Um, to just cut out the competition.
Awesome. Well, thank you for joining us this evening. It's been um incredibly helpful in our understanding as we move through a lot of these housing topics. I think this council is very interested in homeownership and we've demonstrated that through investment of both ARPA funds and our general funds into homeownership. So. Thank you for providing us some good opportunities. You should consider all of us allies in your work and reach out to us if we can be helpful. Um, I know there's a lot of interest here. So thank you. Okay, I think the uh we would like to take a five minute break since council has been going uh for a bit. So if we could come back at uh eight twenty seven, that would be great. All right, we are on to our first work session of the evening, Agenda Bill two, two, one, three, four. Development code update priorities. I think we have Anna with us this evening. So introduce your friends and get rolling.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I it's just me tonight. My um, my partner in planning, Brian. Um, Martin is on a very um, very well deserved vacation right now. Um, I'm the Planning Division Manager in the Community Development Department in Beaverton. And the purpose of this work session is to provide a scan of needed updates to the development code. Um, and there are many and hear from council about higher and less high policy priorities. To briefly set the stage, I'll note that the development code. Um, implements a lot of goals for the city. And um, and that includes providing a smooth path. Through uh the land use process for customers that range from homeowners and micro businesses. To regional and national developers that are making big investments in the city. It's important to bear in mind that these different topics that we'll cover in this presentation. Um, they have a lot of overlapping elements. And they don't necessarily need to be standalone projects. Um, I'll be moving on in a moment to kind of summarize um, a lot of needed changes to the code. Uh, and I'll use the same categories that were used in the Agenda Bill packet uh that was distributed ahead of this meeting. Your feedback tonight will inform drafting of a work plan for code updates over the next few years. Which will be created also in consultation with other divisions and departments in the city and the city manager. Since we're already uh well into the evening tonight, I'm going to walk through the slides. Um, relatively quickly and then pause for discussion at the end and it's it's easy for me to. Go ahead and click back through the slides as needed, um, if it's helpful for the discussion. So, um, first of all, I'd like to note that, you know, a lot of the documents that are shown here in this slide. Have already informed a lot of development code updates in recent years, but there's certainly more work to be done. Some of these documents call for pretty specific updates to the code. But some are really more broadly influential for considerations of new policy. Um, this slide shows specific topic areas and also some specific projects. That have been requested by elected and appointed officials and committee members over the past uh five or six years. Um, we've been hearing a lot about um about the tree code. Um, partly in relationship to the Housing Options Project that's underway, partly because we're anticipating doing a lot of that work with the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. Uh, the land use notice update is really um, pretty narrowly addressing some um questions about how we are communicating about. Land use applications in the process. Um, there's been a specific suggestion to extend notifications, not just to property owners, but to renters. The multiple use and commercial district update um is really reflecting the need to tune up the regulations for areas that are. In those higher density areas, particularly around transit. Um, we have done some very targeted. Development code updates in the last few years in these areas. And at the time, council expressed support and interest in really taking a more comprehensive look to make sure that. The zoning for those areas really supports city policy for creating um that those denser transit friendly mixed use communities. Um, transportation updates, that was um, uh, will also show up in a number of the other slides. We have adopted policy that's transportation related. There's certainly work on the horizon that will be done by our Transportation Planning Division. A lot of transportation work. Is going to be happening in the city. Some of that will relate to the development code. Um, and council, council members recently have a draft, have proposed some specific changes regarding transportation to the development code. The sign code update, um, this is, this uh actually dates back to a massive overhaul of the sign code that was done in twenty seventeen. Following that, it was clear that there were some things that needed further tweaking, including allowances for signage in residential areas. Um, and also some commercial areas as well. Short term rental policy and code, this is really a policy question that the city hasn't discussed to date, which is um, how should the city be? Um, regulating Airbnb, B B R O, these kinds of short term rental services. We need to have those conversations um about what the policy should be before we can um actually create any regulations um for, and the code does not currently. Regulate those uses on purpose. And the historic resources update um reflects um frankly, the obsolete state of. The historic resources inventory in the city, um, and the fact that the last significant work on historic resources was done. In the nineteen eighties, maybe the early nineties. So there is, there is, um, there is an interest in um, in updating that work. Legal mandates, this one is a little bit of a moving target. Um, the state of Oregon hasn't shown any signs of slowing um, an interest in um placing mandates on local jurisdictions for implementing state level policy. But we do know um, that uh one effort in particular, the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Executive Order. Um, implementation, those rules will be adopted um this month, um, I believe. Um, that will include some things the city needs to do. Um, however, like a number of the other topics. There is some significant overlap with other policy objectives that Beaverton already has on the list. Most specifically here are those regulations for those um mixed use areas near transit. Those geographies overlap a lot with the tart regulatory targets um for this executive order. Um, so this is a fun one. Um, at least it is when you're a planning nerd like me. Uh, there are a lot of pages and a lot of rules in the development code. Um, and there are a lot of opportunities for clarification and improvement. Staff keeps a running list of um fixes that are needed. Um, and we have actually over a hundred items on the list for consideration for the next omnibus text amendment. Some of them are pretty um, are pretty narrow. Um, maybe there's a cross reference that's incorrect. Um, maybe there's a definition that's missing. There are actually a lot of those. There are also minor policy questions like. Should food trucks with mobile use permits be required to leave the site overnight or not? Um, those small scale policy questions are in that bucket as well. I'm not going to go through all of these, but. Um, I do want to just emphasize that in order for the development code to. Um, actually provide for a transparent and predictable process. Um, for those who are our customers, um, uh, in the land use process for development. We do need to um keep the document in good working order. Um, if it's not in good working order, it's frustrating for everyone involved and. The code doesn't do a good job implementing the policy decisions that it is supposed to be applying. Um, a couple of quick notes, um. Some important opportunities, uh, major projects like. The Cooper Mountain Community Plan, the Housing Options Project. And the Electronic Permitting System Implementation will be wrapping up in the next year. This will free up some significant staff capacity to begin new projects. Um, some of these projects, as I mentioned, have some significant overlap and can be confined efficiently. There are some limits. If you try to stick everything in one project, it's going to be very cumbersome. It's going to take a long time to get through. Um, that is probably not a good idea, but. We can be strategic about how things are combined and um, and what could potentially make more sense to stand alone and. Get through a little more quickly. Um, and there could be um, the ability um for the city to take advantage of funding from the state or from Metro. Um, via a couple of different grant programs. We've been successful in the past. Um, and getting some mileage out of those funding sources. It's really helped increase our ability to um, to get things done. Um, but there are some significant constraints as well. The total amount of updates that are needed. Really significantly significantly exceeds the capacity of staff, even with the freed up staff with the projects that are wrapping up. And the city has limited fiscal resources to hire um consultants for professional services. Um, that could help to leverage um that staff capacity. Uh, and with that, I will um, open up for discussion. Um, I'm happy to answer um questions or address comments about the presentation. It's probably not a great time to be getting into any of those particular policy areas in a lot of gory detail. Um, but I'm certainly happy to expand on any of them where it would be helpful. But fundamentally, I really am interested in hearing um. Areas where council um really wants to identify those high priorities. And also, and this is almost as important, what are those topics which are not high priorities? Um, not everything can be at the top of the list and it will really be helpful as as we're working to develop that work program. To know um, what would be okay to do a little later.
Who wants to go first? Counselor Hartmeyer Prig.
Thank you. Um, thanks, Anna, for the information. Um. To me, the most important priorities on the list, I'm I'm have the agenda built up, so I hope I'm looking at the full list, but. Um, implementing. The Climate Action Plan into the Beaverton Development Code. As well as the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan. And the Citywide Tree Code Update. Those are. Probably my highest priority ones to do, um, followed by transportation updates.
Uh, Counselor Hassan.
Uh, well, Counselor Hartmeyer Prig, I'm just gonna second what she said. Um. I would just say that I have just like some curiosities around the short term rental policy and code update. So just like there's some questions there. Um, honestly, just super support what um Ashley said. I do want to encourage as we're looking at code and writing code, like what does accessibility uh. Mean to, you know, the average person? I think code has kind of traditionally been written in code. Um, and so just imagining like what does it look like to as these things are being done? as these things are being done, to make it something that is actually digestible to a human and not just someone who has comfort in that language. And so I just as we do any code work, you might hear me say that. I just, I'd like it to be something that that people could understand at a basic level.
You, you and me both. The exercise of writing code is not very relaxing. And you know, getting that technical clarity and having it be in, as you say, accessible everyday language is is a really tall order. So I hear you. I agree with that aspiration. I'm not making any grand promises on that one. I will, I will say this, though. You know, the the planning team has a lot of conversations among ourselves about how we can understand not just the accessibility, but the the potential for the land use process and the code to kind of magnify inequities. And one of the pieces of work that we would have asked for in in the coming years that I'm not sure we're going to have the funding to support is really finding a way to do an equity audit of the code in our processes. It's, I don't know what the outcome would be. It's not, it's, you know, taking on an update to the code to say, do the short term rental policy, for example. It's kind of a known quantity. We know what we need to do in order to get there. Big questions like, how does our land use process potentially magnify historical inequities? That's a very big picture topic. And I I don't know if we have any satisfying low hanging fruit as a result of that. But those questions are really important and staff does keep them keep them at hand and in front of us as we're talking about things like noticing or talking about things like can we communicate more effectively with the Beaverton community about the land use process and how they can be involved? I think there's a lot of mileage we can get there that might not be about the technical language and the code itself, but about how how we invite people into the process and help with kind of demystify it a little bit.
Yeah, thank you.
Can you take down this slide?
Oh, sure.
I would say, you know, for me, I'm not sure exactly what you're, are you asking us to pick the which policy that city council has already worked on to be put into? Like the implemented adopted city policy, are you asking us to pick which one of those are going to be codified in code? Or are you asking us to go down the list further?
Honestly, really, it's it's a broad question. We have, our predicament is that we have a lot of things on the to do list and we have limited resources.
So for me, the council has already put copious amounts of time into things like context sensitive to the design, Beaverton Comprehensive Plan. So like, to me, you're asking me to pick between one of our favorite children. All of those need to go into it because we've already spent time doing it. And so for me, the work plan needs to be, how do you get those six things into the code? Because we have, as council, have valued every single one of those things enough to allocate resources to write them, to have council meetings, to have public meetings, to do the work. And now what you get is frustrated elected officials at the other end because it doesn't matter like what is coming out of Planning Commission and the other things don't necessarily reflect the value of what we've already done. And so like, to me, if you're going to crack open the code, you need to put it all in. That's, that's an important piece. Now, if we're looking at, you know, going forward, for me to feel comfortable dropping off short term rentals, which is probably where I'd lean to go, I don't even know how many short term rentals exist here. This is, I have a friend on the Honolulu City Council where this issue is drastically impacting their ability for affordable housing. We're also seeing that at the coast. I don't, I don't think that's a problem in Beaverton, but I also don't have a frame of reference because we've never been told. And so to me, I think a quick search of business license and Airbnb would probably take someone 20 minutes. And maybe that's a good thing for Jared to work on that works for the city manager. And then I would be okay dropping it off if it's a smaller amount. Because I don't want to like stop mom and pops that have one bedroom, two bedroom that are offsetting their mortgage with the idea that we need to do that. Because I just don't think we have a lot of ADUs and I don't think that's quite the problem here. Number one priority for me, tree code. Counselor Sansucy.
And while it's not my number one priority, I think that 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 one of the number one interesting discussions that's going to take place is how you balance the the desire and the completely understandable desire to develop a good tree preservation code against our continuing interest in developing more housing for residents in Beaverton. Then the trade offs between those two are challenging and, you know, we'll have to figure that out. But I want to echo what the mayor just said about data. I think some of these things really need a little bit more fleshing out for us to make decisions of direction for you. Like, you know, I know some of the issues with the sign code because I've been around. In fact, I I remember being part of the council when that last major update was done and we had some questions about it along the way. And a number of questions have come up with various development applications or other issues, a couple of council appeals of of development decisions that related to sign code issues that most of the current council are completely unaware of. And so I think maybe a a docket of of issues related to sign code that would be useful for you know, to to kind of fill in the background context for some of these things. I think of the things that you have on your list, I I would agree with the mayor that, you know, the the short term rental issues of Beaverton are nothing like the short term issue rental rental issues of Bend, for instance. So we we need some data in order to decide whether or not there's even an issue there. Personally, I'm, I'm, you know, the land use notice code notice update is, I mean, that's a really quick decision to make and it's a really quick change to make. And I think one of the key things that we're going to have to get a little more information for, particularly for those who are not familiar with all the context surrounding these issues, is how big are these things? Some of these are huge. Sign code update is huge. Land use notice update is tiny. Some of the transportation issues are huge, like the T S P update that we're going to talk about next. Some of them are tiny, like the ones that I proposed. So, you know, there's trade offs between these based on how much time is involved in them as well. And I think we have to to take a look at at, you know, kind of what some of the issues are. But for me, the number one thing is not any one of these specific updates. It's, as the mayor indicated, making sure that when council goes to the trouble to develop new policy for the city, that the documents that are used to implement activities in the city are updated as needed to reflect those new policies. And I can tell you, because, you know, I'll tell others, Anna is already aware, how challenging it was for me personally to be told that policies that I had worked hard to develop and adopt as a counselor could not be used in making land use decisions in Beaverton. It's like, so let's get all of our adopted policies appropriately rendered. Are those parts of it that are appropriate to the development code, get them rendered into the development code. And, you know, as far as all the other specific projects go, I I think a little bit more context as to scale and scope would be really helpful in deciding which ones to encourage you to pursue. Thanks.
Counselor Tiffany.
Yeah, I'll make this quick. I I understand that there is a lot of work to do here and it's not as simple as just going in and updating things. It's going to be conversations along the way. The short term rental one in particular, I've I've got a lot of feelings about that. I'm sure everyone does. It's going to be an interesting one to talk about. The three that rise to the top for me in no particular order are the tree code, multiple use and commercial districts and transportation. I think those hit squarely on a lot of, especially around Cooper Mountain, around the urban renewal district, around a lot of the concerns that we're hearing from the community around our trees and have come up frequently in conversation. So they're all important, but I I prioritizing what gets tackled first, those three rise to the top for me.
Okay, seems like you got feedback from council and we gave you more work to do and took Matthew off your list. So please come back with more information and we'll trim the list a little bit further.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to our last work session of the evening, Agenda Bill 22135, Transportation System Plan Update.
Hi, good evening, Council and Mayor Beatty. Let me share my screen real quick. Is everybody seeing the presentation?
Jessica, we're seeing your presentation, the notes version. The presenter notes.
Right, okay.
Try again.
Let me try again. Thank you. I apologize for this. This is my first time doing this one. Let's try this. Good? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, good evening. My name is Jessica Engelman. I'm a senior planner in the Transportation Planning Section of Community Development Department. I am here tonight to talk with you about an update to the city's transportation system plan, or as it's often called by its acronym, the T S P. The Transportation System Plan is the city's 20 year plan for transportation strategies and investments in Beaverton. And as you'll see on the screen, we're calling the project Go Beaverton. And this is to help demystify it a bit and ultimately hopefully to get people to engage with the plan. So just a quick overview to show what to expect in this presentation. We'll take a quick look back at 2010 and what was happening when our current transportation plan was adopted. And then we'll take a look at how each of council's eight priorities relate to the transportation system. I want to take a little time after that to reflect on all of this. And then I have just two slides after that to finish off about process and funding the project. Our T S P was last updated in 2010, and while 12 years may not seem like a long time, a lot has evolved since then. To illustrate this point, I'd like to turn your attention to the cell phone on the right. It's a BlackBerry. And in 2010, it still dominated the cell phone market. Also, in 2010, the last time this plan was updated, people were still buying sedans. Seven of the 10 top selling vehicles were sedans. The shift to much larger, more expensive crossovers and SUVs just hadn't occurred yet. Our Mac system didn't have the orange line. You couldn't tap on and off bus. Paper fares were the norm. Ride hailing services like Uber had only existed for a year. And Lyft didn't even exist. Some popular bike sharing programs like Nike's Bike Town, it didn't come into the scene until four years later. Shared scooter services were non-existent and electric vehicles were thought of as something for the eccentric or super rich. Tesla had not become a recognizable brand to most people. And then thinking about some of the big issues like climate change and racial equity. Climate change was something talked about in select circles. Warnings were given about what would be needed to combat the effects of it, but the effects seemed far off and unimaginable to most. Fires and smoke every summer weren't yet a reality. Air conditioning, air purifiers weren't a necessity in every Oregon house. Racial equity, historic injustices were largely swept under the rug, leaving a system in place where historically disadvantaged communities continued to be under invested in and overburdened, overburdened, resulting in a disproportionate amount of negative health and education and financial outcomes. So I provide this context and these examples for two reasons. One, so that we can understand how much has changed since the last time we took a deep look at our community's transportation system. But also to illustrate that a lot of things that seemed unimaginable or unrealistic just 12 years ago became real in a relatively short period of time. And I truly believe we have the power of imagination, ingenuity, and most of all, agency to change the status quo. So from here, I would like to walk you through the direction we'd like to take the Go Beaverton project, using council's priority areas as an organizing framework. I'll take us through how each council priority has a connection to the transportation system. Let's start with welcoming community. Creating and fostering a transportation system that is accessible and safe and respectful of all who use it is really a necessary component to ensuring Beaverton is a welcoming community. Because ultimately, everyone needs to be able to get to where they need to go. Ensuring people's humanity and dignity are at the core of any transportation strategy or investment is fundamental. And to illustrate a dimension of this, I've included a graphic from a street design manual titled Designing Streets for Kids. The graphic illustrates why it's important for streets to be designed with children and their caregivers in mind. If designed in a way that prioritizes them, this allows them to access the places they need to go without worry and eventually to move about independently. But streets are not just for movement. This graphic shows that they are also public spaces, and this is equally important. They are places where people can gather, pause, spend time, play. This graphic illustrates how when we design streets for our most vulnerable community members like children, we are designing streets that work for everyone. And here I have a quote from Enrique Penyalosa, the former mayor of Bogota, Colombia. In a very eloquent way, he summed this idea up, saying, children are a kind of indicator species. If we can build a successful city for children, we will have a successful city for all people. Moving on to good governance, at a technical level, an up to date transportation system plan provides a solid foundation to make policy and funding decisions and it allows the city to coordinate its investments with its jurisdictional partners. The Transportation System Plan must comply with state planning law under the Transportation Planning Rule. And these rules apply to all local jurisdictions across the state. They're currently being revised as part of the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities Rule Making Effort. And the city will need to come into compliance with these rules. Likewise, Beaverton's Transportation System Plan must be coordinated with both Washington County's Transportation System Plan and Metro's Regional Transportation Plan. Safety. This graphic is from the Federal Highway Administration. It illustrates their safe systems approach to the transportation system, where zero deaths and zero serious injuries is the goal. A safe transportation system is imperative. The system must feel safe and be safe for everyone. No one should lose their lives or be seriously injured while using Beaverton's transportation system. While I don't have any comprehensive Beaverton specific safety statistics to share with you this evening, that analysis will happen as part of this plan. I do know anecdotally that over the six months that I've been with the city, four people have been killed on streets in our city and three more have been seriously injured. This is just unacceptable. These deaths and injuries were preventable. And we owe it to ourselves and our community to remember this. Crashes will never go away completely. People are fallible. We are human. People make mistakes. But those mistakes do not need to result in death or serious injury. There are ways to design a transportation system that result in far fewer devastating outcomes. And housing. The image on the screen shows downtown Beaverton. It was created for the Loop project, but I think it does a nice job of illustrating the importance of thinking about housing in relation to transportation. It shows the housing development that has occurred in downtown since 2015. Our city is growing and where it grows matters, particularly when thinking about providing a variety of transportation options for people. Providing housing downtown has many transportation benefits as it is located near transit and is near many essential destinations, all within a short walk or bike ride when the supporting infrastructure exists. And another point I'd like to emphasize is how people's housing and transportation decisions are inextricably linked. People must get to and from their home every day to go to work, to go to school, to socialize, recreate, meet daily needs. If the transportation system isn't designed so a person has that safe and easy, affordable and desirable travel option at their front door, then this can limit the opportunities they and their families have. As we go through this project, it is our intention to take a deep look at how we can start making infrastructure investments that provide people more travel options near where they live. More options like being able to walk, being able to bike, being able to scoot and take transit and not just drive. Looking at economic prosperity, the pictures on the screen are both taken from open air Beaverton and the Beaverton Farmers Looking at economic prosperity, the pictures on the screen are both taken from open air Beaverton and the Beaverton Farmers Market. Both wonderful examples of how the public right of way has been used and creative and flexible ways to create those welcoming public spaces. But there are many ways a well functioning transportation system relates to economic prosperity. First, it can contribute to the financial well being of individuals and families by allowing people to access jobs, education, healthcare and childcare. Second, if designed in a way that facilitates this, it can help people save time and money, both things that can open up opportunity. Third, a transportation system that provides options is desirable and can attract top talent to Beaverton. And finally, let's not forget the operational needs of businesses. A system that gets goods and services to where they need to go in a timely and cost effective manner helps keep businesses competitive. We'll be considering all these aspects of economic development as we develop this plan. At its heart, the transportation system plan will lay out the vision and strategy for providing quality transportation of this structure throughout Beaverton. Here you'll see an example of quality infrastructure where the Crescent Trail connects to our two downtown Mac stations, providing excellent access to transit by foot, bike, or other forms of micro mobility. And going back to those travel options, the way people travel affects individual and community health. This is something I think we often overlook when thinking about transportation. Getting to where we need to go can be actually fun. It does not always have to feel like a burden. Active forms of transportation like walking and bicycling, taking transit can help us seamlessly weave movement and exercise into our daily lives, resulting in improved health and well being. And moving beyond the physical health, a transportation system that connects people to family and friends and community helps people feel connected to each other, resulting in improved mental and social health. And finally, environmental sustainability. And this one can feel overwhelming, but it is so important. It's the one that will require us to step up and make hard decisions and lead the way in ways we haven't had to before, but I'm confident that we can. The way we design and invest in our transportation system will determine how big of an impact we individually and collectively have on our environment. And quite frankly, whether we'll have a planet we can live on in the future. I'm going to provide a series of slides with a few more numbers to help us get our head around what we're facing and why it matters. We have less than eight years to have carbon emissions and limit global warming to one and a half degrees Celsius to avoid the worst effects of climate change. Together, the world cities are responsible for 75% of global carbon emissions. Beaverton is one of those cities. Transportation is the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the city. One third of emissions in the city come from transportation. And finally, I'd like to share a quote from Alison Sante. She authored the book From the Ground Up: Local Efforts to Create Resilient Cities. And she recently gave a presentation where she said something that resonated with me. She said, "We have the chance to create thriving, just and nourishing places to live. And we must. Our resiliency will have much to do with how inevitable change is taken as an opportunity. Cities remake themselves in pieces. There are massive changes ahead. Let's make sure they're the ones we want to live with." And with that, I'd like to ask you, just leave you with this, these questions to reflect on. What resonated? Was there anything missing? And most of all, how would you like to see council's priorities reflected through this transportation system plan update?
First, I'd like, I'd like to thank you, Jessica and Jean for this presentation, like you, to schedule a follow up with both Counselor Tivnan and Counselor Mitchell. Both of them have students at the school where one of the, where we just recently had a very hard thing happen. So they had to sign off to be with their children tonight. So if you guys could reach out tomorrow and schedule a one on one, this is definitely information I know they both want to talk about. So if we can make sure that happens, it'd be great. And counsel, I'm happy to have the, the three of us chat through these things that are important to the rest of us.
Well, I'll, I'll go ahead and start off if that's okay. And I, you know, I, I may have warned Jessica, but I know I've warned Jean. I'll have a lot to say about the transportation system plan update as it gets off the ground, particularly the early stages of it. But I really liked this presentation. It's, it sort of sets a different tone for transportation plans updating than has been the traditional pattern here in Beaverton and, and in communities right around us. It's a little bit more reminiscent of the kind of top down thoughtful policy level approach that Metro usually takes with the RTP updates. It's like, what are we trying to accomplish? What are the goals we're trying to achieve? Not what project should we do this time around? You know, the, the history of transportation system plans is that they tend to be project lists with a couple of words surrounding them, but let's get the projects onto the list so that we can get the money so that we can build the projects. I, I think it's, it's really important that the city of Beaverton do something better and different this time. There are two things about, about this that I want to say today and I'll save a whole bunch more, actually three. The, the first one I said in the previous work session, and that is we've adopted a bunch of plans. Let's get those plans built into the TSP as fast as possible, meaning, you know, that's got to be a major focus of this transportation system plan update. The other thing is that there was one slide in this presentation that caused me to nearly blow a gasket. And, and thank you for bringing it forward because it gave me an opportunity to say this. The Federal Highway Administration's slide on safety should be a warning sign for us. Because our mission is not to be singularly 100% unilaterally focused on safety. We should be striving for something better. We should be striving for many of the sort of qualitative characteristics that the rest of your presentation describes. Particularly the messaging of the mayor of Bogota, which I think is awesome messaging. And I think the key thing that underlies that message is not just, and the slide, the other slide that you followed it with, it's not just to say, let's keep people safe. It's let's make the transportation system as enjoyable as possible for all users. And in the case of Beaverton, with the policies we've adopted over the last few years, that means pedestrians especially. Let's make the pedestrian experience enjoyable as well as safe. We can make people safe by restricting their movements. That's not what we're after. We make people safe by building and designing better systems that hopefully we can design in such a way that they're really enjoyable. So I think that's, that's the second major point that I want to make. The third point is, one of the things that I think we should be trying to do in the city of Beaverton with this TSP update is playing a little defense. You mentioned coordinating our TSP with that of the county and that of the region. Coordinating doesn't mean being submissive. Coordinating doesn't mean we lay down and say, tell us what we must do. What I think we need to do is to say, these are our values. These are our goals and our objectives. This is how we see them manifesting in transportation here in Beaverton. If you disagree, let's start negotiating. We should not bend backwards and say, oh, the county insists on X or O dot insists on Y, where the region says we must do Z. No, Beaverton is going to do B. And, and if you got an argument with us, let's go to court. Let's do it that way. Instead of saying, no, I'm sorry, you're a, you're a county, you're a state, you're a region, you get to win. No, that's not true. We're a home rule city. Let's, let's set our goals. Let's set our objectives. Let's set our plan. And then if there's some tussles in the future, great. That'll be fun to watch. Okay, enough speeching. My turn. I'm done.
I appreciate that. Counselor Hartmeyer, break.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jessica. This presentation was so engaging and I feel like it very much shows council priorities. I think the only thing that's missing and it's not because it's not listed, you know, I feel like it's implied with a lot of the work that we're doing, but it's important to me that we explicitly call it out. And in this case, I think the thing that's not really listed here explicitly is how is racial equity considered? And, you know, now getting to be on this TV, how I hope, and then we just heard about downtown equity strategy during GIRA. I think we know that some of our major transportation corridors are, the, the residents nearby are going to be potentially lower income or potentially people of color. Like we know where our communities who are maybe more vulnerable and who we've continually under invested in, we know where they are. And so making sure that as we're building out this TSP that we're also considering like the racial equity component of it. And I think, you know, for me, it's like, it's more than just, you know, we've been kind of talking about like anti displacement, right? It's more than just like do no harm. It's like, let's actually enrich the community that we are going to be impacting by like the ultimate changes. So that's really my only like ask in this is to make sure that that lens is also top of mind and actually explicitly written into the plan.
Thanks. It is, it, that is top of mind for sure. And I do have two more slides that I just want to get to just about process. Just as a reminder, but that is top of mind and I appreciate you bringing that up and it will be woven through everything, both from a data analysis, historical context to a process and engagement part, because there are so many different elements to come at it from. So yes.
Thank you.
Do you want to show the other slides?
Counselor, yeah, Hassan, go ahead.
Okay, okay. As Counselor Hartmeyer said, I think this presentation really spoke to, to me and you can feel like the, the work of our priorities and goals like really just shining. So I really appreciated that. I think I already had said this, but I want to make sure I say it here is when we're thinking about like the transportation ambassadors, which I am so excited about. Really thinking about like how we can empower folks to understand transportation policy, because in my one year sitting on the Transportation Subcommittee, I've learned so much. And it is not as slam dunk in understanding. And I think whether it's that committee or whether it's the transportation ambassadors or the community advisory committee, just thinking of, of ways to leverage our youth. We've got a lot of passionate young people who have a lot of opinions around how we do this. And, and also anything that Counselor Sam Susie says, I hold heartily support in terms of ensuring that we're making decisions that are best for our residents here in the city of Beaverton. Thanks.
Great. Thanks. If it's okay with you, can I go on to the next two slides? I think it kind of gets to what Counselor Hassan was saying. Okay, great. So it is my hope that this plan can truly be co-created with the community. And to accomplish this, I see many strands of engagement and they're all woven together to get us where we need to go. And you'll see the normal structure that you usually see for a lot of these projects with the technical advisory committee and the community advisory committee. But in addition to this, we are adding that additional form of engagement where we'd form a group of what we're calling the Transportation Ambassadors. This would be a group of 12 community members intentionally selected to represent a broad array of lived experiences who will serve as ambassadors into the community, helping shape and implement that a far reaching public engagement process. And we also have a strategy to get this project moving. So I just want to work through this real quick. We are proposing a two and a half year project that we estimate would cost the city roughly a million dollars. To help with these costs, we plan to apply for a $300,000 Transportation Growth Management Grant, which is due at the end of July and we should know if we are successful in winning that award in September. Assuming we are successful, we would begin work on the project in October of this year utilizing we hope would be $50,000 of general funds to launch the community engagement component, including hiring a community engagement consultant, recruiting the transportation ambassador team, developing the vision and goals for the plan and gathering early input into the scoping for that larger transportation growth management contract. If we're not successful, then we would come back to you to decide on the path council would like to take. But let's assume we are successful, then the $300,000 from the Transportation Growth Management Grant would be used to help hire a consultant team to support much of the technical and the analysis, technical analysis and the financial forecasting work required of the plan. The Transportation Growth Management Consultant contract would likely be in the amount of $800,000 and the city would be responsible for the remaining $500,000 over the course of two fiscal years. And then finally, I just want to say, being mindful of the numbers being put forward here, we will simultaneously be exploring ways that we can use the in-house talent and resources as much as possible so that we don't have to rely as heavily on consultants. And with that, just if there's any questions about process, I'm happy to work through that or talk about that as well. But I want, I did want to get those last couple of slides out there so you could see what we're thinking in terms of making this become a reality.
Awesome. Well, thank you for this really thoughtful presentation. It was definitely something different for transportation and refreshing and, and had us thinking through a different lens. So I, I appreciate that, the delivery. I'm excited about what's next. Do you have everything you need for council this evening?
I do. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is there any council new business tonight? Okay. Seeing that, I'm going to call this meeting to an end and I will see you guys next week.